Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where wishes stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Two quick announcements. One, on March 4th, 2019, which is Monday. We have a budget workshop for the Recreation and Parks Department as well as the Buildings Department. We have one check over $25,000, which was for Mennozian Sons, which was part of the Moore Memorial Restoration. Came out of the capital account. That was for $29,950. And also, we're going to be having a public hearing to amend the Irvington zoning code to permit short-term rentals, which is also scheduled for Monday, March 4th, at 7:00 p.m. in Vilch Hall. Where are you going to come here? She's not going. Not tonight, no. So this is the so-called Airbnb law that is probably going to take months and months to get through and try to tweak and come up with something. We're taking our first shot at it on Monday, March 4th, at 7:00 p.m. in Vilch Hall. So I will make a motion to have a public hearing to consider a local law of many of the Irvington zoning code to permit short-term rentals. Waiting on a second. All there. Okay. Anyone else have any announcements?
Not that I can think of right now.
No worries. You don't want to come back to you. Correspondence, we didn't have any unrelated to the public hearing, so nothing there. Consent agenda. Anyone have any questions on this?
Yeah. Haven't found budget transfers.
Yes, you can cross that off. It's only the minutes. It's only the minutes that we got. Yes. No, you're right. You're absolutely right. Thank you.
Okay.
No, you're right. So that's basically approving the minutes.
So I have no questions then.
Approving the minutes, the regular meetings eligible are held on February 4th, 2019. I'll approve them if I get a second. All there. Next, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing requesting special permit for the adaptive reuse of historic buildings at 45 West Clinton Avenue. If you have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Public hearing is now open. Now, if we want to see a little history in this library or...
Well, I think it probably makes sense for the applicant to outline
Sure.
what the plans are and you can ask questions and see if...
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. I'm Joe Lombardi. I've owned the Octagon House for 21 years and I'm pleased to be here tonight. I was excited with my son Mike about how wonderful, whatever way it goes, it's just terrific that consideration is being given towards the idea of assisting with these national landmarks. And to put it in its perspective, the Octagon House, when it was placed on the National Register as a national landmark, it was just the, when there was a point when there was only a thousand of them. So it was sort of number a thousand in the entire United States. And there are a number of features that the Alpital was a womb, which are extraordinarily unique and we're all lucky that it's here in the Village of Irvington. So the property that it sits on is all of the property that was there in the 19th century. It's a little bit over three acres. And the buildings, the outbuildings are all the buildings that were there in the 19th century, although they had to be reconstructed based upon old photographs and foundations. So the proposal is to allow by appointment only, I stress that, by appointment only, to allow people to tour the house. And tours would be limited to 20 people at a time. They would last for 50 minutes and then the next tour would occur 40 minutes later. There would be a 40-minute time period in between so that cars could leave and then the new cars could come aboard, come into the property. There would be no parking on the street, not even on West Clinton in front of the house. And the way we would organize it is that the people giving the tours, before the tour starts in that 40-minute period, they would go out and direct the people as to exactly how to park so that it's getting tight and it also leaves a lane in the middle. If, God forbid, there was a fire, that there's a fire lane in the middle that a truck could pull in. The drawing that was with the original application, we revised slightly just to show how the layout would work with this fire lane that I'm speaking of. What it is, is that we would have 16 cars, room for 16 cars readily along the driveway and still a pathway for a fire truck to come through in case there was an emergency. Now, if everybody of the 20 people, which is just really unlikely, things can happen, if all 20 people each had a car, so it's four extra cars to make the call on the watch. And so we'd consist, 20 cars readily, we're not envisioning that there would be 20 guys. And then those cars would be wheeled out at a certain point and the new cars would then come in for the next tour. Now, the house has stoops, a very important architectural feature. And we thought long and hard about how to provide accessibility and we referred to the standards that are provided by the Department of Interior for National Landmarks. And one of their suggestions seemed to be the best, which was that we allow, we make available an audiovisual presentation to people who are wheelchair-bound. And that that presentation would actually be in some respects greater than the tour because they would have photographs of some parts of the house that are likely touring, like the basement and some of the historic photographs of the house. So it would provide a full 50-minute story in slides and really a very nice thing and a good experience. So in a way, anybody who was wheelchair-bound or didn't feel like they could climb all the stairs would get an experience that was everything, perhaps even better than actually physically touring the house itself. There was a question about buses, no buses would be permitted. So bear in mind that it's all reservation, so we'll know ahead of time if, let's say, a group wants to come, exactly how they would arrive. The only thing that would be permitted would be a minivan or a small bus that could come into the driveway like a car, period. And absolutely no bus with the motor running in front of the house, none of those things at all. There were a few other questions about trash that we don't envision any additional trash, no impact on the act of, for certain. There was a question about in what way do we meet the requirements of the state code? And the state code has a section which specifically relates to historic structures that are having a change in use, the section AJ901. And we need or exceed all of the requirements. Like as an example, if it's an historic building, interesting enough, the smoke detector doesn't have to be hard-wired, but in fact, ours are hard-wired. So there are a number of items in here that we go beyond what the AJ9, historic buildings' requirements of the New York State Uniform Code are. The gardens and grounds will be briefly shown right afterwards, so there's a 10-minute pause. It's 50 minutes inside of the house, 10 minutes on the grounds. People are told before they come and when they arrive on the site that they have to leave at the end of an hour. So that's being very clear. Apologize. And I think that kind of summarizes it, and I'm available here of course to answer any question you have.
I mean, I think, you know, you summed it up briefly, but, you know, one of the things that came out of the comprehensive plan, and something we've been talking about, that's a board for a long time, is allowing owners to be able to keep and maintain historic homes. So this is, you know, something that we feel very strongly about. You know, I think when you think about Irvington, places like the Octagon House are top of mind and it makes it a special place and a unique place. And I think not only besides the financial benefits, you know, being able to, actually, I've been to your property many times for events and I've always missed the tours, so to me selfishly, I'm looking forward to those. Yeah, exactly. But, you know, I think sharing such a wonderful treasure with people is also interesting and unique, and I think we're seeing something similar with Phil Lwaro. You know, kind of these amazing places that have been kind of viewed from afar but now can be experienced. I think it's a great goal, you know, and then hopefully also it allows them to be restored, continue to be restored and maintained, mostly maintained in your case. You know, and I think that that's a huge goal of the sport, to keep those special places and not have to have you, you know, subdivide three acres and put up two houses and, you know, those types of things that we've seen in many other historic areas in the Village in the past. So I think that's kind of the big picture of items. You know, I think that you've had limited events at your house that haven't, you know, haven't at least reached flowback to our board. We do have one letter in support as well that I'll read later, but, you know, I don't personally have a lot of questions now. We had submitted some questions which you answered, but I'll look it up to the board first and we'll look it up to the public after that.
Well...
Go ahead.
Of all the questions that we submitted earlier, I think the one that might be interesting for people to realize is related to the need or no need for, one, there wasn't going to be refreshments or anything like that, so there's no cafe or no service-oriented type activity. And the second was about souvenirs or cards or whatever. I forgot what the, your specific answer was, but remember that generally, you know, again, there was not going to be a store or a gift shop or anything like that. So I think that's really interesting that, in the sense that it removes a lot of other kinds of areas where people, you know, persist on site, shall we say, and hang out and sort of make the potential congestion between visits an issue. Or like a cafe might, even if it was just serving, you know, bottled drinks, soft drinks, it would create additional trash or recycling, you know. So anyways, I think that's all interesting. I'm just bringing that up because those kinds of features were not part of your plan as you expressed it to us.
Right. We absolutely do not want that at all. Drink, any food, or any type of gift shop or trinkets, et cetera. The only thing that we would sell would be a book about the house, a picture book, and that's in the works. We presently have one that's similar about another house that I restored and that book is going to be ready in June. And that will be the only thing, it'll be the first thing you come in, so that you have opportunity to see it. And it won't be a situation where people will linger and spend a lot of time thinking about it or not, they'll have a party or not, so. And nothing else other than that. Yes?
Well, I'm, I would reflect what the mayor said about this long-term interest here in Irvington to honor these places and make Irvington, keep it, shall we say, unique and attractive to people. It's always a thing that people say, "Oh, isn't that where the Octagon House is?" You see pictures, somebody will randomly pick pictures of Westchester County and low and behold, there will be the top of the, it's like, "Oh yeah, that's our Octagon House." So it is a point of pride for me and I think everybody here, as the mayor said. And being able to keep it has been something that our comprehensive plan group discussed, I don't know, for months. And, you know, how do you thread the needle to make it work? So one thing that you addressed, this idea of having 40 minutes between the tours seems workable to me, and especially when you said there's somebody, I'm thinking of it as the kind of valet kind of person, you're saying is going to direct
Correct.
the cars to go so that they park. And now I think the same people who actually do the tour...
Then they would come in, correct. After the cars are in position, they would come in and give, and assist with the tours. Right now, I was starting out giving the tours, my son Mike. The two of us.
Right. But you might not be the car person.
But we've tried it out. It works.
So I hadn't realized, you know, you had thought that part through, but that's reassuring to me that, you know, when there's envisioning 20 cars, and it is hard to imagine that 20 people are all coming as a single person in a single car. I mean, the statistics must, you know, be, I mean, that would be like the Black Swan or something. It rarely happens, so I think that's, you're thinking about how you would do it.
Typically, you would do something like this with a friend or relative.
Right, right. Why, why, right.
Wife, spouse.
And we're also assuming that we had all 20 spots filled too.
Yes, right.
It's probably going to average 14 and it's probably going to be
Right.
a car, you know, whatever.
Now, the fact that, you know, one of your neighbors, you know, has already written a lovely letter saying they don't expect any problem is reassuring. But I guess the, the parts about, you know, how much room does a fire truck need, I don't know. I mean, that's something, you know, there are a lot of like inches and feet and things that, the devil in the detail, which...
Sure. But we would work that out further with the fire department. We asked and had a very nice meeting with the fire department a few months back, asking them what recommendations and suggestions they would make. We didn't discuss the parking part, and so we're going to invite them back once more and discuss with them the width of the lane that they need in a quick emergency to pull their truck in. How wide does that have to be? And we'll put a corner to during the tour time and we'll make sure the cars are parked to the left or right of that.
All right. So then there's the issue of, I know you had estimated in one of our questions, how many, how many days a year, or how often might this happen? And can you talk a little bit about how much of the year, when you wouldn't have them, how it would happen that you would or wouldn't or...
Right. So we would envision that there would be at least two or three months in total that we wouldn't. But there may be periods of time when we open, like particularly maybe at the holiday time, when we turn the house for the holiday and maybe we open for a week and let people see that. And I think that a Halloween period with the fall colors and all of that might be a particular time as well. Bearing in mind that there would only be four tours a day, we might have as many as five days a week. We wouldn't go beyond that though. That would be our absolute maximum in terms of the sheer doing of it, the physical doing of it. So I think it's safe to say that maximum 10 months, four tours a day, five days a week. But that's a real maximum.
Right, right, right. I'm thinking a little bit like Lindhurst is basically closed in the winter, but then they have their holiday and then they have a, you know, like no, they're...
I think the difference is this is going to be by reservation.
Right, of course, yeah.
So we have no interest in somebody driving along Broadway and then making left turn and coming in or anything like that for a whole series of reasons. The collection of the tickets, the making sure that it's a valid person that wants to see it, you know, all of those kinds of things. And so I think our emissions will be limited. So I, what I'm saying is, is way out there being a maximum, but it may be far less because we wanted to keep it at a scale because it's very much a home too, and still will be.
So do you have a sense of how you will promote it and what venues or how will people know about it?
So the social media, for sure. And then the other museums have heard about this, Lindhurst, Sleepy Hollow, and Washington Irving Home. And they're very interested in it because they see it as a way in which they can play off one another. And so they've asked if we would like to join in with them in promoting it to some degree. I'm going to be very cautious about that. I mean, it's not like we would do some, you know, advertising to a great extent, particularly because we want to keep it at a low-key and at a reservation level.
I think those are the only things that I can think of at the moment that, I mean, I have had the chance to tour it, so.
Can I follow up for a second for me with the question?
Yes, sure.
I'm only, what she was talking about and what you were just talking about, I'm concerned about whether or not you're going to need some sort of limited signage perhaps at the driveway that says "by reservation only." And if you do that, I'm not sure what the approval process is, but I'm sure you're going to need something that would allow people who have heard about it, don't know anything else about it and drive by so you could stop them from, you know, piling up at the wrong time.
Right. And we will submit that to whichever department we should, but we do envision having a sign that says, "Go to a particular website to learn more about this site," so that it stops somebody from, which we have now, you know, because now people frequently, amazingly frequently
Drive in the driveway.
Stop a car and they stay there for a while, wondering, trying to think it through of what to do, and then of course, come in and then ask us. So a sign that says, "Visit this website," and that'll explain what, you know, what the facts are about this house, of the history and how you go about access. Access will be...
I mean, if it clearly says "by reservation only," you know, that's...
Definitely, that would be the case.
I have to just second, Connie, I was participating in one of your tours last year and it was really fascinating and I think anyone who, you know, advertised, well worth the time and very intriguing, a lot of the facts that you presented and some of the background information, both the architecture and, you know, interior decorating and art, so I really enjoyed it.
Thank you, Connie. I enjoy speaking about it. I enjoy it as much as anybody might enjoy it.
So I was just, if I get my follow-up here. Only if I still get it turned. Okay. Go ahead. I'm very excited about this, of course. The way you described the, those who can't or don't want to do the stairs and the having, having a video for those who need their wheelchairs or, because they finally get there and they say, "Oh, you know what? I don't think I can make my way up there." So do you have a sense of where that would be? Where would you...
Yes, in the artist's studio, right next to the greenhouse.
The artist's studio.
There's a, there's a building that's 20 feet by 23.
All right. Not to get a take, no. Okay. Oh, okay. Thanks.
It's 20 by 14, just past the greenhouse. And so what we would do is favor those that are wheelchair-bound with the cars that are parked in the driveway leading into the carriage house. And then they would come across the lawn, you know, which is flat, and come into the artist's studio. And then there, there would be a continuously run 50-minute slide presentation, and a good one. I have already, actually. It's all, it's all done. And it actually provides, you know, because it's slide after slide, a great deal of information that more than you could do in just a physical walking around.
So are there, is it enough, I'm trying to imagine that space, that's maybe two wheelchairs or how, how much could fit in there at one time?
Eight or nine.
Oh, okay. It's bigger than, okay.
No, I'm envisioning that it, you know, it could be that it's some kind of situation where a home is something where people all in wheelchairs, they come in a minibus and they come in, so, you know, it'd be relatively rare that people would come in a wheelchair, but if they do, I think they'll be delighted. I don't want them to feel short-changed in any way.
And the, so the unique thing about our new law is that this can be a home and a museum, adaptive reuse, and it's probably not that common across the state.
Right.
I don't know how many municipalities have ever done anything like that, but it seemed to, as we reviewed it, meet our needs. So you see it working as the house, the big house, still being actually a residence?
I think that's the special appeal of it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Because typically, museums are frozen in time, frozen with the people who lived there, you know, some time ago. And in a way, it's stagnant in a way. I'm not, I'm not trying to criticize. I mean, it can be extremely interesting, but it's a different type of thing. This is a living house, so, you know, if you're on the last tour, you're going to smell Joy's Roast. It wants to be that.
Right.
It adds to it because you actually feel that even though it's a house that was almost really the fantasy of somebody who in the third quarter of the 19th century wanted to do the most amusing type of extravagant thing, that somebody could still live in it and still enjoy it. And that's a part of the story.
That is part of the story. You're right. All right. Well, Janice?
Oh, thanks. I will be very brief. Thank you. This is one of the really kind of classic win-win situations. This was very much what we wanted to accomplish, to enable treasures like the Octagon House to remain your family residence but also make it available to the public. You've planned it out well. You've obviously thought it through every possible detail. I just have two, one very much a detail. What I would envision and just something to keep an eye on is that you're going to be very good about moving people out, but people may want to stay and walk the aqueduct or come into the village, which is a wonderful thing, but we just need to keep an eye on parking on Clinton if that happens. Because if you're pushing people out to make room for the next tour, that is inevitably what's going to happen. Again, I don't anticipate that there's going to be 40 cars up and down Clinton for all the reasons you described, traffic. You anticipated maximum, but it's just, just a thought. The other thought, and I really only thought of this as you were talking, is there a way or might you consider making this presentation that you've made for the people who use wheelchairs more widely accessible for public presentations and other venues?
Certainly. Yep. I'd be happy to give it here in the Village or...
Get to the library or people who may not...
Absolutely.
Wonderful, wonderful. That would be, that would be value added.
I'm more than prepared to do it and I would enjoy that.
Okay. So I don't know what the next step is.
I'm going to read the...
Oh, the letter, yeah.
Piece of correspondence. Dear Mayor, Smith and Trustees, I wanted to let all of you know that I'm in full support of Joseph P. Lombardi's application for a special permit for the adaptive reuse of the Armored Snyder Octagon House, allowing it to be used as a historical facility with public visiting hours. I have lived across the street from the Lombardi family for over 20 years and am confident that such a use will not negatively impact our West Clinton Avenue neighborhood in any way. I'm also pleased that the Lombardies will be able to share the extraordinary care they undertake on property with others beyond the immediate area. Best of our flock. With that said, I'll look it up to public comment.
That's very kind because they're the most impacted. They're directly across my whole front of the trailer, almost. Thank you.
Good evening. Earl Ferguson. I think I've been involved with some form of historic preservation in Irvington for over 30 years now. I've stopped counting and I'm not finished yet. And I did start a letter but never got finished. And I'll send that in, in support of this effort. And that's just basically what the letter is saying is that the applicant... New York State Historic Building requirement for public safety. And the use is, the proposed use is compatible to the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. And we are very fortunate to have an owner of a historic treasure such as it is be so willing and able, really, to preserve that property. And I believe that it would be to the greater benefit of Irvington, and we should really support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well, you know, we had, we had kind of heard internally from, you know, Larry and indirectly through the building department, that I think they're still working out some issues with you. I think what I would say at this time is we should, you know, encourage you guys to work together, and I'm confident we can find a solution. And I think also because this is the first public hearing for this type of use, I recommend we leave it open for one more meeting. Hopefully in that time, you and Ed, you and the building inspector can get together, work everything out, and then we can take a vote next time.
I'd like to suggest something alternative, which I thought about. In the planning board's situations for site plan review, many times they provide approval for the site plan, but with a specific contingency that it's based upon, you know, like zoning board approval for variances or resolving the remaining open items with the engineer and building department.
Sure.
So, you know, in one level, I feel like, I would be hard pressed to see how we'd come into a situation where the building couldn't be used, especially after the analysis that we saw coming back in terms of the state requirements, safety code requirements. So anyway, so my alternate would be to go ahead and approve it, but with a contingent that all the details do get worked out.
Sure, they need to that. I probably, I think, this is actually a weird week because it's a holiday, well, it's a school holiday week, so that's why I was kind of leaning for it, so we could open it one more time, see if there's other public comment. I actually think most of the public comment's going to be very favorable, so I'm not worried about the big backlash coming, you know, coming back from vacation. But, you know, I thought just kind of go slow while we, you know, did this for the first time. But to me, it's, I mean, I'm fairly comfortable, again, you're going to work everything out with the building inspector and that sort of thing, anyway.
I'd be happy either way, but it's, in general, we usually bend over backwards to make sure that people have multiple opportunities if they somehow missed, that this had happened, and, oh, I wanted to say something. So I take Mark's point that it would make some sense just to do that, and if the planning board does that successfully. But I think I might go right now with leaving it as another chance for people to come, and Dr. Longi isn't here either, so it might be nice to have one more public hearing.
More people have a chance to say wonderful things.
Yes.
That's all.
You don't have to come back.
We're coming back.
So we don't have to make any motions or keep a public hearing. But we also, anyone else with love and wants to speak now, otherwise, we'll have other chances against us.
Right. And any more letters?
Yeah.
For people that just somehow missed hearing about this, that would be great. Oh, Chet wants to say something.
Hi, I'm Chet Kerr. I will take the opportunity to, I'm actually here just personal interest and interest in art, in my neighborhood, in seeing this first application. And I have to say that it's certainly well done. It's just excellent, and the way it's done, it's thoughtful, it's planned out all the kinds of contingencies that both I, as a relatively close neighbor, would be concerned about it. I'm so pleased to see it been done so well. So I fully support what's going on here.
Thank you. Now, I'll add one more editorial comment, that we know that not everyone with historic homes has been a great actor. It's been actually really interesting the way we've had almost two experiences with people trying to do something similar to this. And, you know, hats off to you for doing it the right way.
Thank you.
And, you know, from the beginning, trying to figure out the best way to kind of legally do it, you know, within our zoning and everything. So we appreciate that attention to detail, and we appreciate the way you've been very mindful of your neighbors, you know, and I think it reflects on kind of your care and, you know, your neighborliness, that you had several neighbors speak on your behalf, so.
Thank you, Connie. Thank you.
Keep the public hearing open.
Keep it open one more time.
Okay.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Next, very exciting thing. Requesting enactment of an amendment to Chapter 504 of the laws of 2006, known as School Rule, Assembly Bill A2218A.
Yes, I know you feel like you did this already, and you did.
Oh, yeah.
But apparently, there was a slight change in the state legislation, so there's actually a new, technically a new bill that you're now asking for home rule.
Okay. People don't know what we're talking about, I'm going to check this. This is, we're reporting our neighbor villages in town Greenberg, that we're doing hotel tax, which obviously doesn't affect us, we don't have a hotel, so we're happy to be supported. But if that breakfast, I think if that breakfast does, but a Airbnb.
Well, yeah, it's subject to interpretation.
That's everything.
Yes. I think there's a chance that they could.
And there's a chance. Resolved pursuant to Article 9 of the New York State Constitution, the Village Board of Trustees and the Village of Irvington hereby request enactment of Assembly Bill A2218A entitled to enact to amend Chapter 504 of the laws of 2016, amending the tax law relating to authorizing the town of Greenberg to adopt the local laws imposing a hotel, motel occupancy tax for hotels not located in a village. Authorizing specified villages and towns of Greenberg and Mount Pleasant to adopt local laws to impose a hotel, motel occupancy tax on such villages in relation to extending effectiveness thereof. And further resolved that the village clerk of the Village of Irvington hereby authorize to certify a home rule request form and require, and forward required copies to the New York State Assembly for changes to the same. I'll make a motion, check in a second.
Second.
All in favor. Next is the Senate version, known as Senate Bill S3404.
Which reads the same, except for the bill number, if you want to just paraphrase it that way.
Sure.
Try to save you some trouble, too.
I appreciate that. So we get right to the policy. Yeah, so we basically ask for the same thing for Senate Bill S3404, titled to enact to amend Chapter 504 of the laws of 2016, same thing. Further resolved, the village clerk of, the Village of Irvington hereby authorizes to certify a home rule request form and forward the required copies to the New York State Senate, changing the same. Make a motion, like a second.
Second.
All in favor.
Policy on the deployment of alternatively fueled vehicles.
So this resolution came out of, actually, a conversation we had at a budget hearing recently with the Public Works Department. And it simply lays out the goal of the board and of the village, to look for ways to deploy alternatively fueled vehicles, electric hybrid or other such fuels that may come about. That's your ultimate goal, but we thought it was important, at least on a staff level, something we've been following, which is to lay out some of the guidelines that we follow, and so that everyone can see that. I know you get questions from time to time, how come you don't have this vehicle, how come you haven't done this? And we get that as well. And this is something we can look back on, you know, as our current policy, anyway. And there's really three main guidelines that govern all of this. One of them is that the vehicle is commercially available, that it can be serviced, you know, by dealers in close proximity, so we're not looking for aftermarket modifications of vehicles. I'm sure they work, but then when they don't, what do you do? So that's, you know, from our standpoint, it's not practical. That the vehicles that are available will actually be able to do the job that we need them to do. So, you know, there may be, there may be electric plow trucks that come about, but if they only run for an hour and a half, then what do you do? Yeah, I mean, you know, so that's an example of something not meeting the demands of what we would need it for. And then also that we can actually refuel it or recharge it with equipment that's available. You know, compressed natural gas is an alternative, but we don't have that fueling capability currently. That's it.
Okay.
So I think one thing I just wanted to mention is that we did have some follow-on discussion, and one point that I made with Larry back and forth, I think we all agreed to, was that the criteria of usage requirements, you know, what's the actual basis that something can or can't work, that has to be a little bit flexible over time. In other words, it can't be rigid that it has, you know, you might have something that's within 80 or 90% of what you think is, would be perfect, and it may be reasonable to go ahead at that point and say, you know what, we don't have to have 12 hours of extended use, but maybe because of some other mitigating factors. So as long as we can be flexible that way, I think that's, the policy makes a lot of sense.
I think it's, the most important thing is you hit this down, and it's to fall back, this is the basic approach, and it's nice to have it in writing, so. I think it's fine, I'm good.
I think we got those three from here, so it's going to have it on paper. Resolved to adopt the following policy on the deployment of alternatively fueled vehicles. It is the policy of the Village of Irvington to deploy electric, hybrid, and other alternative fuel vehicles, collectively alternative fuel vehicles, or AFVs, throughout its fleet. If new vehicles are scheduled for purchase, either as additions to the fleet or as replacements of existing fleet vehicles, the village will seek to purchase AFVs using the following guidelines. The AFVs are commercially available, sold and serviceable by nationally recognized dealers across the proximity of Irvington, including no aftermarket modifications to make two major vehicle systems, for example, engine, drive train, fuel exhaust, chassis, electronics, patrol systems. The AFVs can meet the operational safety demands of the functions to which they will be deployed. This includes on-road performance, storage, yeah, on-road performance, storage, refueling, charging procedures, routine maintenance, and repairs. The fuel for the AFVs and the equipment required to refuel and charge them are readily available. I'll make a motion. Second, all in favor.
Okay.
Next up, Budget Workshop, Fire Department and Water Sewer, body gasses.
All together?
Using up all their water.
Realize.
That's a good.
Realize we put fire and water.
Yeah, I like that. Who was clever enough to do that? The fire-water thing. I'm going to blame Jim. Jim said, I want to come when fire comes. Water, come to fire.
Turn your books to public safety.
Okay.
I think in both, you say, no requested increases, so.
We hear about the mandated cancer benefit.
And the rest is just increases, we have to match the increases that were awarded during the year contingency, we have to include it in the next week's budget. And then, as you just said, the new mandated volunteer cancer benefit.
All right, I read.
That gave into effect on January 1st. And the village did take the enhanced benefit.
Yes. I'm assuming you guys are not big martyrs, and your budget is, you know, adequate to your needs?
Yeah, I think we had the same discussion last year, that the operating budget for the fire department now meets the needs to keep us standard and well-maintained and well-trained. Do you want me to stand?
Yeah, I think I'm ready.
Do you want me to stand?
I took a fire since I chatted, so I can stand if you want.
Just, I guess, to preface, I am not going to be seeking reelection in April, so our terms are going to move forward. First Assistant Chief Dave Dowd should be moving up as long as everything follows procedure, and Second Assistant Chief Danny Billings would be moving forward. So they're really the operators of the budget that we're talking about here, so just to put that out there for everybody. But yeah, the budget does, the operating budget meets our needs to keep our items maintained, up to standard, and our firefighters trained to the level that we expect. So that's why we're not requesting anything at this point. Capital budget's a different story, but we'll see it, we'll see it in May or whenever that is.
I don't even check out the new truck yet.
How's the new truck?
Truck's good. We had a fire in East Irvington, I think you mentioned it at one of the meetings.
Was it really the cold spell?
Yeah, it was three degrees.
There's always fire during the coldest day of the year. It's almost like.
There's always a fire in the coldest day of the year, and there's always a fire when Dave and I are away on vacation. And Danny did an excellent job having the firefighters extinguish the fire, and everybody went home safely, so a job well done. But the fire truck has already had its first fire. It's proved its worth already. We.
Foam works.
Yeah, we implemented some new technology using foam, and it puts fire out in half the time. No, that's, no, layman's.
Pick up water.
Not pick up water.
Use less water.
Use less water.
Who said we needed water?
So one of the accomplishments this year was the new fire truck, they come in after about two years of planning, and.
It was a big item.
Yeah, it was a big item. But the lifespan is, the one that's leaving is a 93, so 25 years from a vehicle is pretty good.
I made a speech to how well you guys maintain it as well.
Looks like new.
Annual maintenance, preventive maintenance, guys are paying attention to things that break, bringing them to our attention and letting us send them out to get repaired.
What's going to happen to the old truck?
The old truck should be getting sold to a municipality in the county of Westchester.
A non-named municipal.
City Mount Vernon should be, we're just waiting for the check, so.
They said it's canceled next Tuesday.
In the meantime, we're jockeying back and forth between the office windows in the alleyway.
Exciting.
And then the other accomplishment this year, big one, is our roof got finished.
Another year.
Yeah, it was a nice 15-month project, but the second floor is now underway, which is going to be a few more months, so the struggle continues, but.
Well, we appreciate you guys not coming here and complaining every meeting night that, you know, on your way down that there was, you know, you don't have a place to meet or train, you know, so we appreciate your flexibility there.
The department's been very gracious in letting us use the senior center at will for all of our training meetings and what have you, so that's been a very, very good alternate for us to use for the past 15 months.
You know, I get your reports every month, but what, do you have any observations over time, if there's been change in the kinds of calls you get, any amount?
Yeah, so we did 420 calls last year, which was up from 383 the year before. So a pretty significant increase. We have, I'll give you some of the stats, just 42 members, the 420 calls were over 780-hour total span. From the time we were dispatched to the time we got back to the firehouse, that's about seven days total of, you know, so if you went to every call, you would have been gone from either work or your house for seven days. And that doesn't include, you know, returning back home, so. We have an average of eight firefighters at each call. And some of the big ticket items, commercial alarms, so Two Main Street, Bridge Street, Two Main Street, Bridge Street.
South Esther.
South Esther's been better, the high school. A lot of them become, the high school in particular, and Brazzard down at Bridge Street, they move cooking facilities around, and they'll put them underneath a smoke detector that wasn't meant to, so in both of those cases, we worked with the facilities to either change the detector, move the detector, or move the cooking facility. And so that helps reduce the calls, but in the meantime, you get five or six of them, and all of a sudden, you know, your call volume goes up. We also have, Connie did a lot of the smart meters in town in Irvington this year, and with the smart meters, even though they were doing electric, they were testing for gas leaks. So we had a string of, you know, a few days where we went on 15 gas calls because the electrician, if you want to call him that, was also sniffing for, you know, would find a minor gas leak in the meter, and that would make an emergency response, whether or not, you know, we had an argument with Connie about that, that would trigger it. or not, you know, we had an argument with Tommy about that, that would trigger it. So we, we attribute the large increase to that, you know, those, those kind of things, so.
I had a guest call my house.
Yes, you did.
Startups, chief call, I got two calls out of it.
Yeah, came over, yeah, smells like yes, bro, let's bring everybody up. And then our, our training front, we do training, first and third Tuesday of every month, that's our in-house training. That, those numbers, we did about eighteen firefighters per training, training event and we did ninety-one hours of training, just on the first and third Tuesdays of every month. And then alternate events where we do either public relations, boat training, driver training, we did another ninety-one hours of training throughout the year. So a significant amount of, of hours put into the, the training and day-to-day calls through the village. We, we spend a lot of time, you know, every year we kinda come up and give you these numbers and they're overwhelming and they're great and we pat everybody on the back. One thing we've been neglecting to inform you of, and I'll pat kind of ourselves on the back, is the amount of work the officers and the chiefs do on a daily basis to keep the department running. And I think that's kind of, should be brought to light because you guys might not know how busy or how difficult the job being the chief or an assistant chief of the department is. And I think it's kind of leading to a, kind of a, a poor culture in where the fire department lies in, in the importance of just village government everywhere. You know, the, the fire chiefs aren't just the, the guys volunteering anymore and they go, ah, they go do some training and they, they go to parades and they, you know, go up to the firehouse and do what they do on Friday nights. The job of the fire chief has really become very administrative. The rules and regulations from OSHA and PASH, our, we, we just recently hired a lawyer to bring in, to help us rewrite our policies and best practices that follow some of the mandates from the state, the federal government. It's a three, it's over three hundred pages long of rules and regulations we have to follow that are just standards, they're not even our own kind of, you know, little policies and procedures, so that'll be coming across your desk, but that's something that the chiefs have to keep up to date with, know, adhere to, and then take those policies and best practices and implement them across the forty-two firefighters, all of which have their own desires and needs and, and so the, the job of the chief, you know, we throw a lot of hours and, and we, we can, through our, our reporting system, we know all the hours that we do from, from calls and training, but we don't have any way to identify how many hours we're really putting in to doing the administrative work as chief. And so it's just, just for your information that, you know, in the, in the near, couple of years, I'm gonna suggest to Dave and Danny and whoever follows in as Second Assistant Chief, to try and tally up some hours.
Yeah.
To give you an idea of, of what the fire chief, volunteer fire chief is really responsible for and how many hours they're putting in to do the job. And at some point to identify if there's a, a role for a position that is, you know, can handle some of those administrative tasks as time goes on. I don't think it's needed right now, I don't think we're in that position yet, but certainly the, the administrative burden coming down on all the chiefs, it's not just Irvington, this is all volunteer chiefs, has really started to take its toll on just the, the overall, the job and the people that wanna do it. It takes a big responsibility and so, you know, less and less people that are interested in, in doing the position, so.
Well, double thanks to you guys to not only do that part, but do this part and your, your, your work.
But we do, we do it because we, you know, we love what we're doing and we're proud of what we're doing and we're not looking for pats on the back, but I think this is an opportunity just to kinda point out while we had everybody's ear to, you know, let you guys know there's a lot of administrative burden that the, the chief takes on and the, and the assistants. But we enjoy it, we love it, it's a great learning experience and, and we're proud to, proud to do so.
Oh, I'm glad you brought it up. And if you, but please do start tracking even on an informal basis so that we have a better understanding. I know exactly what you're talking about, these are standards and demands that come from various state and federal regulators and they're trying to make sure everybody does the right job, but it takes a lot of time to make sure we're complying.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, so.
Very good, so we'll prove your no increase.
Wait till we get some water, oh my gosh.
For everything you do. Yeah, I, I know Paul Foner always says it's the best deal in town at the, at the annual dinner, it really is. And, but the only way, the only reason is because, you know, we're not paying you for all the time you spend away from your family and work and everything else, so we're glad you love it, well, we're lucky you love it and, you know, we really appreciate everything you do. And I think, you know, you, you talked about the hundred and eighty-two, I think my math is eight, hours, you know, especially the in-house. There's also so many hours of training that people take to the county and things like that, too, that, you know, some of those courses, you know, three times a week, three, four hours a night for three, four weeks, like that, it's again, it's, it's grueling. And if you're a chief, then you're going to all the calls, you know, and that's what I always like to tell anyone in the face about the horn is, you know, when, when it bothers you, think about now if you had to get off your track, get in your car, drive over, fight a fire, come back and then go to bed.
Try.
Yeah, exactly.
That's why it's tough getting new members as well, because the demands now are, the courses is two, three months, three nights a week and all day Saturday for like two, three months.
Yeah.
Just the initial training, so.
So a person says, gee, I'd like to be volunteer, why, when's the first fire? That's, you have.
It's not, that's not how it starts.
You go to the academy just like everyone else. It used to be, it used to take, it's called Essentials, it was forty hours.
Yeah, I took mine twenty-seven.
Okay, now it's all my crazy forty hours.
Now it's a hundred and thirty-nine hours.
Wow.
So, and this is New York State, this isn't Irvington proper, this is a, it's New York State.
Well, thanks again, guys, we appreciate it.
We'll see you for the capital.
Oh, yeah.
Jim wants to stay?
You're fine.
I'll see you on Monday.
Well, water in the store has their own tab. Yeah.
Water has its own tab. Own tab, yeah. Well, I did an, an analysis with Larry and I think it'd maybe better sort of Larry explains all the moving parts that are going on. Is it unusual?
Right, okay.
Well, just, yeah, I mean, we've, this has been this way for a number of years with this fund, but just so you know, the breakdown of, of who's talking about what here, you know, Brendan and I deal with the financial stuff behind the scenes, Jim's the guy who's out in the field making sure things are running, so he'll certainly be giving you an update on how things are going and if you have any questions, obviously, that come up. I can't tell you about pipe fittings and all that other stuff, but he can't really talk about financial stuff either, so, so we're, make a good thing.
Don't you?
So, anyway, so this, this department is, is a bit unusual in comparison to other departments in that the accounting for it is done on a separate basis from the rest of the general fund. The operations of the water fund and the sewer fund, to a much lesser extent, are, are accounted for separately, they're, they're accounted for almost as though they were its own little business with, with sales and expenses and, and, you know, it's, it's totally separate from the tax levy, none of it is funded by the tax levy unless you choose to. So, so each year, we, we go into the year with the challenge of trying to figure out what our expected water sales are gonna be and then the resultant expenses. So if you break, and I know that some of this is academic for some of you up here, but for everyone's benefit, if you, if you really break down the operations of the water department and into separate areas, one of them is a, is a, is a fixed set of expenses. And when I say fixed, I mean they don't vary based upon how much water you spend, you, you sell, but they're fixed to the extent of debt service and salaries, you know, we don't hire and fire based upon how much water is being used, thankfully, and, and other, those types of expenses. So those are fixed expenses that need to be covered and the way we cover them is by selling water and we sell it, you know, at a, at a gross profit to try to cover those fixed expenses. So the, that, that's kind of basic, you know, how to run a business one-on-one, I guess. The challenge here is that from year to year, the amount of water that we sell is dependent upon a lot of factors, most of which we have no influence over, maybe a tiny portion we could, but in large part, it's driven by the weather. When there's hot, dry spells in the summer, people water their lawns and the water use skyrockets. Other times of year are less weather dependent. People don't do anything differently in the middle of the winter when it's cold or hot, doesn't really matter, that they're not watering anything, they're not using any outside water, but what really drives the usage in this village is, is the lawn watering. So from a budget standpoint, as strange as it may seem, we're happy when we're selling a lot of water and using a lot of water, even though it puts a lot of strain on the system physically and even though it's environmentally not the greatest thing, but if we're, if we're just a bean counter like, like us, we're happy, you know? So just, you know, again, trying to, so you see how we look at things, we, we look at our own little, our own little world here. So, so for example, and you can, you can see a little bit of the fluctuation in some of the numbers that you have in your, in your books there. So skipping past the first page, which is the summary page, there's the very first page, well, page one of eight, the very top line says metered water sales to public and the. So, you know, our metered water sales, this year we're projecting sales of two-point-two million dollars. That's well below what we thought our budget was. Last year was two-point-one million, but the year before that, going from right to left here, the year before that, two thousand and sixteen, was, was two-point-five million, almost two-point-six, so.
You're starting advertising campaign or under the task?
Yeah, exactly, right. So, anyway, so, but again, the, the, there are variable costs that, that change based upon how much water you use, of course. The, our water purchases in the years when there's lower water usage, our water purchases from Greenberg, which is really New York City, are, are down. We don't get hit with very many excess charges from New York City. Does anyone need an explanation of excess charge quickly? Yes, no, okay. So, so we don't, we don't pay the excess charges when, when we're, we have lower usage. On the other hand, when we're selling more, we, we do have higher, higher costs for water purchases. But net-net, the way this relationship works is that, and the way we're proposing to put together a budget so that we have a, not a moving, moving target here, is that we're proposing to put together a budget that is what we consider to be an average year of usage. If the usage is, is below average, we probably will, will run a little bit of a deficit and if it's above average, we'll, we'll run a surplus. And we think that's the, the most common sense way to approach this. I think, I think budgeting, budgeting for the lowest possible usage amount and trying to make a profit at that point is, would, would be a fairly large rate increase, to be honest with you. And then, but when there's high periods of usage, you would have a, a windfall, you know, it's just, the, the relationship doesn't seem to make sense to us. So that's really where we focused our efforts this year, was really to try to bring what, and analyze what we see as the, as the, the normal usage, which is not an easy term to define, but in looking at some of the data, we, we were focusing in on revenues of about two-point-four million, in this case, a little bit higher, about two-point-four million of revenue. We've put in for water purchases, based upon that two-point-four million of revenue, we've put in what we anticipate as water purchases to, to supply that amount of water. And then the fixed costs are the fixed costs. I mean, we, you know, those, we can go through those, but those are, those, those aren't anything we had to decide upon directly.
So the ones highlighted there on the summary page are the ones that would be the variable costs?
Yeah, on the top page. So again, looking at the, at the bigger picture, I guess, there still is a deficit that's running in this fund. The, on this summary page that, towards the bottom, is, is the projection, we, we do expect a small deficit this year, twenty-one thousand dollars that would be added to that, to that overall deficit. And, and again, that's simply based upon the fact that it was not a particularly hot and dry summer, which I think you probably can remember, it's a long time ago, but.
It wasn't so bad.
Yeah, so, so there wasn't a lot of lawn watering going on. So, but as, as this is currently budgeted, and, and again, this is all what the plan is, the, if we have an average year, we do have a line item in here that is specifically there to reduce the, the overall deficit of this fund. There's, there's a seventy-five thousand dollar contingency that's specific to deficit reduction, so that money, you know, would not be used. And so if everything comes in, you know, as planned, for an average year, we would see a deficit reduction of seventy-five thousand dollars. We also have another seventy-five thousand dollar contingency, which is, which is really more about the operations of the, of the department. So, you know, real contingencies like, you know, excessive water main breaks or, or some, you know, large repair or piece of equipment that's needed. So, so those never happen. So if those don't happen, then the deficit comes down even further, but again, it's, you know, that's, that's, that's the way we're structuring here. So, so the numbers look a little strange because last year, we, I think we, it's pretty obvious, we over-projected our sales, we also over-projected our water purchases, which is why we don't have a tremendous deficit for the, for the year that we're, that we're projecting. But I think going forward, it, it makes sense, you know, to look at more of a, of an average year and budget for that and then make any adjustments after that. Brendan and I were talking today, for example, there, there are some pieces of information that we don't have yet, just so you're aware, so we've made some, you know, pretty broad assumptions. The most important one is the, the cost of water from New York City for next year.
Unit is up seven percent, right?
Well, I mean, I don't remember what the, the assumption was on that, but we, we did make an assumption and, and so whatever that is, you know, we, we do have a rate increase built into, to these numbers of, of two percent because we know off to the side that there's going to be rate increases on New York City water supply side, we just don't know what they are yet. So it's really more of a placeholder at this point.
At least they don't have their budget meeting set either.
They usually do like.
They didn't have, they don't even have the meeting set.
Nope, as of today, I heard from them later, I asked them specifically, can give me an inkling and they don't have any meeting set, so the people I work with, they're, nothing's been released.
They're on a different calendar than we are.
July.
They're July one.
July one increase.
So.
See, we are February, end of February.
So we're waiting patiently. Anyway, does that, do you have any questions about that?
No, my question is a little different. How, how many people are now paying their work bills automatically? Yeah, we agree with, with Ralph Nero.
I'd say about twenty-five percent.
Okay.
Last time I looked, about twenty-five percent. More, more are signing up, but you can pay then online with a credit card or a one-time, but there's a charge. The most economical way to do it is with an ACH, an auto debit.
Can you remind me one more time, Brenda? What is the final call? I'm looking at page one of eight.
Sure.
Final column, variance to requested stage.
Right, that would be the difference between what's requested and the adopted, the original budget. See the top heading?
For, for this past year.
For this past year.
Right.
So it's contrasting last year's budget to this proposed budget. Budget over budget, adopted budget to the requested. So the variance is the percent increase over the. So, the variance is the percent increase over the adopted budget.
Right. So, it's showing, obviously, a very large decrease on both sides, both the revenue and the expense side. And again, that's, that's the, the recalibration of, of our revenue projections, essentially?
I'm just trying to see, are you meaning against the adjusted 2018 budget?
Not the adjusted, no, the adopted, or the original, what do they call it, original 2008 budget.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, right.
Okay, oh, 27, 2752, okay.
Yes.
So, the entire budget in, in total is, the whole budget is decreased by $326,000 because we're decreasing our revenue projection and also the, so water purchases.
And final current projection is based on the trends that you're seeing?
That's why, right. The final current projection is what, how we see the end, the end of the year, so, ending up. So, on the metered water sales to the public, I know what they are right now through February. Actually, the February bill is being worked on now, through January, so it's February, March, April, May. So, for those months, we use historical figures from last year. So, based on what we've billed already from June through January, that we know, and the rest is estimated. So, based upon that, that's where we see the...
So, Jim, could you explain to me, final readings? I mean, that's one that's jumped up in the budget, but is this, what, final readings mean when you're, someone's shutting off water, or when someone's changing a meeting?
When they're moving.
When they're moving.
They call and request the final reading, send a man out, he takes the reading, we give it to town hall, they make up a final water bill, and that goes to the lawyers at the closing. And it also changes ownership of who's responsible for the bill.
We charge $40 for final reading, so that's an accumulation of $40 charges. So, you can see, a lot of people were moving last year. We don't know how many people are going to...
Oh, I see, it's all driven by the change of ownership.
I think previously, we were charging $15, and we increased it to 40, because it's...
It's labor-intensive.
15 more isn't covering costs.
What's the percentage now of wireless readable meters?
It's probably, I would say, about 98%. I mean, we still have some, some people that just...
Some actual laborers in the back office.
Well, with the wireless meters, you know, decreased our metering time a lot, so now we're doing more maintenance, fire hydrants, you know, buildings, equipment, doing, you know, maintaining the fire hydrants a lot, a lot more. We've had a lot more break, so now I have more guys I was able to train to, to fix the fire hydrant instead of having to replace them, so...
Better use of everybody's time.
Yes.
Yeah, instead of wandering around.
Absolutely.
Yeah, house to house.
It would take approximately two and a half weeks to read them the other way, and now it takes about three days.
And they're not getting out of cars and walking over icy sidewalks, and, you know, there's lot, there's lots of things that go wrong that way.
Yeah, I can imagine.
If you had to go down into basement, sometimes the stairs aren't the best, or they're stuck in the way people trip.
No.
So, now that eliminates that. And also, the new meters, most of them, probably 80% of them now, you can get 96 days worth of data. So, when I have somebody call up and say, my, my, you know, my bill's very high, I can go up there, download it, 96 days for every hour. So, before, I'd have to go out and, it was like hocus pocus, explain it to them, no, it's your, your sprinkler system, or it's your pool, or... Now I have hard data, so they have no dispute over, I can go, boom, here you go, here's, here's your toilet turning on at 1:00 in the morning, here's it turning off, here's it turning on again. So, it helps that way.
Okay.
And it makes people feel a little more comfortable than I'm just not telling them, no, no, it's just your sprinkler system.
Like you used to do.
Like you used to.
Had no choice in the matter. But you notice not as many people are calling your office now.
That's true, yeah.
So, the other, well, okay, just, let's see that, so the other thing, solid repair meters is got, is going up to some degree, based on, over last year's initial, original budget, but are we, are you, is the village actually selling more meters now that, or are these meters requiring more repair?
Well, some of the meters, we were able just to put a brand-new, new head on it, you know, with the radio, but a lot of them were installed around 85, a lot of these particular meters, and as years goes on, they're, they're starting to go. So, it's just, I think, you know, changeover from, from 85, now, you know, the meters are breaking, and we're replacing them.
Even if they have a head, a digital head on it already?
Yeah, some of it, the bodies, call it T-10, T-10, we, we sell Neptune T-10, and that's a particular body style. So, you're able to adapt onto those, the radio heads.
Right.
You know, without changing the whole meter. So, we went around and did that as much as we could, but now those are breaking, you know, the meters are actually stopping themselves, the, the mechanics inside the meter, not necessarily the register.
Right.
So, then they have to purchase a new meter.
Okay, thanks.
Well, what happened is Jim will get a zero reading, so when those readings come up, zero meaning, it's, it's not working. So, when we receive the readings, if we have a zero reading, we'll know there's something going on. So, maybe Jim's crew will go out and check it, and we've done a fairly big, what Jim's been working with primarily Monica in my office, Monica Tiru, and they've really enforced, you know, the people to buy, to replace their meters in a timely fashion. So, they actually have, you know, you passed some legislation not that long ago, and a couple of years ago, where you get notices, and then finally, you get a shut-off threaten, threatening letter if you don't replace it, because we, because we're losing the metering of that.
I mean, sometimes it benefits them, sometimes it benefits us, but usually, it's the benefit to them with a broken meter.
With a broken meter. We'll set an estimated bill based on prior usage.
And then even when we have a final reading, and we go out there, and it's somebody that's had a broken meter, that's not responding to our letters, we make them replace it before they move. Now, so...
So, that's been a big push, and I think we're in a good place right now.
Yeah. I mean, you're always gonna have some maintenance to them, because they, you know, stuff's constantly changing, but we have very small lists of broken meters now.
Okay, that was my question, like, how often does this happen?
We send letters out regularly, every month.
Every month they send out a letter.
Yeah, every month.
I mean, not to the same people, it's different people, but...
So, it registers nothing as your usage?
Well, we inquire as to why, is it a vacant building?
Yeah.
Is it a non-working meter?
We'll go out and reread them.
Reread them.
Reread it, and if it's a zero again, then we'll make contact with the homeowner, go in the basement, have them turn on some water, see if the meter's turning.
Right, right.
We'll change the register to a new register, have them turn it back on, and then that's determined, okay, it's broken. Here's the size of the meter, this is where you need to go to get the meter, here's my number, call me when you pay for it, and I'll gladly give you a meter. And then they hire somebody to install it, then they give me back the final reading sometimes, but usually, if it's a broken meter, we don't really need it, it's a zero. So, we'll move forward from there.
Zero, they need to start, you have to start then, the billing from zero.
So, you don't know that you have a broken meter until somebody from your office calls and says, hey, it registered zero. How would the homeowner know? You wouldn't, I mean, your water works fine.
Tell you the truth, some homeowners don't even know where the meter is.
Until the village tells you, right?
They'll say, the meter's on the outside of the house, right? No, that's how we used to read them, because there would be a little black box that we would, but the physical meter's actually inside, and some people don't even know where they are. So, I'll go over there and find it for them, this is your meter, this is how you read it, especially when the high bills. I show them how to read their meter, so, because, you know, you get a, let's say something happened at the beginning of the, the period, and then you get your bill, no, nobody knows in the meantime, so you could have, you know, 70 to 60 days of a high bill. So, when I finally get out there and speak to them, I show them how to read their meter, how to do a comparison, especially with sprinkler systems too. I'll do an estimated, and I said, well, according to this, you know, you're gonna be using 130 units in three months, so if you cut back to every other day, then you might use less. A lot of it's people moving in, not even knowing about sprinkler systems or anything, and then they get their first bill and...
They are, yes, then...
They learn really quickly.
Three, four thousand dollar bill will teach you.
Welcome to Irvington.
And all you need to do is a little hole in it.
Don't forget to look at your, your sprinkler system in the first month.
Well, if you think about it, people are trying to sell their house, so they have their sprinkler turned up, and so the grass is very green, it gets sold, the people move in, shut off for the season, they turn it on in the spring.
Spring.
They don't even look at anything, and then when they get their bill in July, they're like, oh, my God! And I'm like, sprinkler system? And they're like, oh, well. Then you start looking in their record, and you can see the previous owner was watering a lot, because he's trying to sell the house. So, I show them that, and then they're like, oh, that makes sense.
This is like a study in human psychology.
Right.
It really is.
It is. And I mean, everybody uses water different too, you know, so...
Okay.
Because they always ask for an average, like, an average house, how much is an average house used? There's really no average, because, you know, some people have four kids, some people have four kids, two adults don't use much water, then you have others that use a ton of water, you know? You drive by, it's raining out, the sprinkler system's on. So, I like taking pictures of that, so when I get a phone call, I'm like, your sprinkler was on?
Okay, all right, so what do we need to do here?
So, the budget for the fund is, is, you know, aside from those moving parts that I explained, the, the rest of it, there's a, a lot of little changes going back and forth. You have, welcome to go through them, but I think, you know, in large part, the, the items that are going up in the budget are related to debt service and to just basic personnel cost, or things associated with personnel cost for the normal annual raises. The, you know, the items going down are items that we adjusted really to, to better reflect, you know, a tighter budget and, and what the current usage is in those, in those expenses. So, we got the screws turned a little bit on them, but it'll manage. Beyond that, you know, I mean, Jim, if you, if you're interested, he can give a quick outline on the things that are going on in terms of capital projects. You, you see some of the names come by your, in the reports that you give, and so he's been busy, you know, monitoring those and moving those along, but, and there's, they're not insignificant, so...
The most recent one we're doing now is the low-service transfer tank, which is up, up at the top of the reservoir, which controls the low-service zone, is anything low Broadway towards Main Street, I guess it would be the, what is it, the west side? West side of Main Street?
West side of Broadway.
Broadway, I'm sorry, west side of Broadway. From Main Street all the way down to Mercy College. So, that's fed by a 12-inch pipe, which is fed by an 8-inch high-pressure main that goes into a tank, it's like a toilet tank, it had a float in it that goes up and down, so when we get usage down here, you know, the water would go down, this float would go down and let more water in. So, back, I don't know, it was 2010, we had leaks going on, we were losing water, and we were losing water through this tank. So, basically, I went and fixed the pressure-reducing valves, which prevented that, but now we needed to upgrade the tank with a new float and a new bypass, so we can control the pressure in the downtown better. So, that's the project that's being done up at the top of the reservoir, which is completed, except for the, we have to take water samples, because they painted inside the tanks, they have to make sure there's no volatile organic compounds in the water. So, the company that we hired finished the tank, did the samples, didn't sample, you're supposed to take one sample, and then one 24 hours later. So, we re-sampled, so we're waiting for that to happen, and then that tank's gonna get turned on. The other project is putting a guardrail on Field Point Drive along the bottom of the reservoir. I'm in contract with the contractor, that's gonna happen probably in the next two weeks. The Legend Hollow Pump Station, which just feeds Legend Hollow, the 69 houses, 63 houses up there, is over, I don't know, 25 years old, needed some upgrades, so that's the next project, we're getting a new control panel and a couple spare pumps, so that should push that for another 25 years. What else are we doing? We did the, we're preparing for Bridge Street property, you know, Bridge Street water main replacement, so they've done the survey and all that stuff, so we're coming close to trying to get a bid together to, to do that. And then also Mountain Road, we also did so far the, the groundwork, the footwork, to get that new water main installed up there. In addition, they're also doing some sewer, which we're not paying for, but the, the property at the end of Hermits Road is putting in a sewer force main. So, the whole idea is to try and get them to do that, and then us to do the water main, and then we're gonna repave, repave Mountain Road. So, we're waiting, kind of holding off the repaved Mountain Road till we get the water main in, because it wouldn't make sense to pave it, tear it up, put a water main in. So, there's a lot of going on, a lot, a lot of goings on with that. The Lewis, Lewis Road water main extension, or sewer extension, which Mrs. Goldsmith is paying for, is completed, except for, we have permission now to put the services from the houses that are there. Right now, they're still in the old system. So, they're getting put into the new system, and then while we're gonna review it, and then probably take that sewer over, so we'll have a new piece of sewer main that runs up Lewis Road that picks up five houses, which is a benefit to us, because we get rid of some septic systems and, and substandard service connections to the previous sewer. So, what else is going on? That's about it for now, besides water main breaks, which we had two in February, one on Seth Buckout, and one right in front of 136 Main Street. So, I was away for that one, so...
What a shame.
Good timing.
Good timing. Saw it on my phone at 3:00 in the morning.
Not the, uh, low-water tank is done, but not, I guess, not...
It's not in service totally. Uh, the bypass is running right now, because here's a pressure-reducing valve, it's, so you have an 8-inch water main that comes into this tank, it's high-pressure water. It normally would go into this other tank, fill it up, and then the float mechanism controls the pressure and how much water goes downtown. Then you also have a pressure-reducing valve, which bypasses that tank, and you're able to use the same pipe. So, let's say if we had to take the tank out for maintenance, I'm able to still run it via this pressure-reducing valve. So, that's what we have it running through right now. Prior to that, we had that tank totally shut off, and of course, you probably heard some complaints about, I had, uh, blue valves on these fire hydrants that were dripping water. Well, what I was trying to prevent was water main breaks like Thanksgiving and all these other ones down at Bridge Street. So, what those valves do is if the pressure got too high, it would dump water to prevent a water main break. So, at one point, we were just running strictly through our PRVs on Station Road and Arty West. So, those are kind of sleeper valves normally, our main feed is that tank. Well, let's say there's a fire on the far side of town, those would open up to allow the fire hydrants to maintain pressure. So, we were running through those two valves, and that's what spurred some of the breaks, was trying to adjust those valves. So, now we have it all under control, the low-service will be able to be controlled better, we can lower the pressure if we wanted to. I mean, it's sufficient as, at what it is, but we have the option to lower the pressure, which is better for, better for, you know, the pipes.
So, you're talking about water, uh, water main replacement in Bridge Street, is there any kind of, was there any kind of question about, or thought about redundancy down there, or do they need it?
Once we replace what needs to be replaced, we're not really gonna need redundancy, because we'll put valves on it to strategic parts, so we won't shut off the whole complex.
Right.
We'll just shut off what, what needs to be affected, because right now, we have to shut it off at the train tunnel, so that shuts off that whole, even the senior center down that way. So, if we put valves at strategic spots along there, which we've already looked at, we'll only have to shut off certain, you know, a certain length of pipe in order to fix it, and the businesses will have water.
Which is good.
Yes. Well, on Thanksgiving, we had the break, we fixed it, turned it back on, and it broke eight feet down the road. So, I was turning it back on, told everybody, oh, you're gonna have water, great, and then we turned it back on, and get the phone, shut it off, shut it off. So, there was another hole in the pipe about the size of my fist. But the problem you have down there is you have coal ash, you have oyster shells, you have bottles, it was basically a dump, kind of, and they put the water main in it, and soda ash, you know, ash from the, from fires, very acidic. And then you have groundwater infiltration from the river, which is brackish. So, you have metal pipe, you know, the ash, and then you have the salt. So, every time we clean the pipe, you find another chunk missing out of it, so you have to, you have to dig further to find a clean piece of pipe. So, you could start out over here, and I could end up in the police station before I find a good piece of pipe to tie it into. So, the new pipe's gonna have a coating on it, so it'll prevent that.
And when is that project gonna start?
Probably not till fall or so next year.
The reason is that, as his attorney, I'm gonna have to speak on that. No, um, no, in all seriousness, we are working on the engineering now, but you have not yet appropriated the money to do that project. The reason is, is that we are looking seriously at grant opportunities, especially given the relationship of that water main to commercial businesses.
And the seniors...
Often money for that senior center, there's, there's a few tie-ins that we would like to explore, so...
But then...
Yeah, so if we can, we can scrape by a little bit, we'd like to take a stab at the, at, at a grant first, and if, if we don't get it, we're not gonna sit around, of course, and put anyone at risk, but, but it's worth the, worth the effort.
So, we haven't found any new dams anywhere we weren't aware of?[1790.82]
No, well, that's another one I'm working on, is Halsey Pond. Right now we're putting the stream bed in, we've filled in the lower pond, um, put some piping in because you had a couple leaks, um, at the toe of the dam. So we're encasing where those leaks are, because it's probably on the upstream side, which is a whole nother project. So we, we put them in a basin so we could monitor them, which is what the DEC wants or the DEP, DEC?
DEC.
So I rebuilt the spillway coming out of Halsey's Pond, it used, it's a stone spillway, it was all, one side was busted out. So we repointed and rebuilt that. So then below that, you have to make a dissipator pool, so when the water goes in, it slows it down a little bit, and then it would be a stream bed that it goes up into, which goes through the old dam wall on the far side and then back into the stream. So we're basically, before it would go in there and then on the left-hand side it would go into a stream, so now that's gonna be filled in. We'll use, you know, big stones to make a stream bed, so we'll go out of that and directly into the stream. And then we have to do some plantings on the side, but that's in the springtime, I have to get the matting, erosion control matting down. And then I want some room on either side of the stream bed so we can maintain it, and then I was gonna talk to the tree commission about doing some plantings up there. And then maybe put a park bench or something, a bench over there, a sitting area or something like that.
It's actually gonna be a nice spot, once it's, once it's all back together. Um, and the other thing, the other component of this is that, um, the engineering analysis, which we've not spent any time really discussing it in great detail, because you have other things to focus on right now, but the engineering analysis for the main dam, um, has been submitted to the DEC, we're waiting for their comments on it. But the, um, we, we also need to understand whether there's modifications that need to be made, and those modifications could be anywhere from not terribly expensive to super expensive. So, um, right now the indication is pretty positive, to be honest with you, it's, it was, the estimates were about a quarter of a million dollars, which is, which is on the low side.
I thought it was gonna be multi-million.
Yeah, no, high, high side is, you know, is upwards of two million, so, um, but we'll see. I mean, none of that's finalized, so, uh, you'll certainly be hearing more about this during the capital budget discussion, but that's, and by the way, this isn't, you know, Jim's doing this because he's knowledgeable about this, he doesn't run Halsey Pond, um, but he's, uh, he's, he's good with dams, so.
Does water from there.
Right.
So, no, he really has stepped up to, and we appreciate that. We appreciate your expertise and the whole, I mean, it's, uh, the engineering that goes into it and, and, but a couple, couple times when I've spoken to you and, you know, I've been yelled at by someone, and you start explaining to me engineering, I'm always super impressed, um, so we, I always, I always appreciate when, uh, you always pick up the phone when I call and you always have a very good explanation that I can, you know, dumb down for me, not engineering mind, um, that I can explain to the resident or business owner that's, you know, upset because they don't have water.
Yeah, there's a lot that goes into it, a lot more than, you know, people don't see it until it's coming out of the ground or they don't have it, so there's a lot, a lot to it, you know, a lot more. And there's a lot, like Anthony was saying, there's a lot more administrative stuff that you have to do now, a lot more rules we have to follow, a lot more testing we have to do, a lot more reporting, um, so it is what it is, but I like it, so.
We're glad you like it.
Yeah, we know that the public gets a, a little leaflet booklet every year describing all the testing and like, seems like it's about the same every year, but just to tell the public again, um, how safe our water is, go ahead and just say it, say it.
I mean, we're regulated by, by the New York State Department of Health, we do seven bacteria samples a month, we do more quality parameters, THMs, um, we test the chlorine every day, the, the pH. So, you know, it's more regulated than bottled water, people put a lot of trust in bottled water and we do more testing, it's more regulated than anything, so.
Okay, good, thank you for saying that. I, but I tell people all the time, just drink the water, drink the water from the faucet, it's fine.
Well, usually the first thing I do on a dirty water complaint or some kind of water complaint is I walk in, I run the thing and I take a big gulp of it, and I'm like, oh, it seems good to me. I mean, like, you know, sometimes you can see visually stuff in it, but a lot of times somebody will say it's-
After you move the crayfish.
It's like, it's like a smell or something like that. I mean, it doesn't help because I smoke, so I, I don't smell so well. So, uh, I'll bring Ray Ross or one of them, I smell the water, and then I drink it and, you know.
Be great if you collapsed, right?
Yeah.
Just kidding.
Exactly, I don't think they'd like that too much.
I think I get called.
Probably, or an email, at least.
Well, so, I mean, I think the, uh, the budget's basically flat. Yeah, the, well, but- Then we're gonna have two percent increase to kind of cover the- Yeah, the bu, the budget's not necessarily flat, but it's, there, there's a lot of moving components there, but in order to recalibrate it, um, and, and have everything be, be in balance, um, we, we do believe that a two percent increase is necessary, given, given the costs that we expect to see for the cost of water especially. I mean, that's the main, that's the main thing that we don't have information on. Now, obviously, if they decide to pass on a rate increase, then maybe we reevaluate that, but, you know, by the end of this budget process.
Yep.
So.
Great.
I wouldn't hold your breath, though. Thanks a lot, Jim, we appreciate your, being here tonight, we appreciate everything you do every day, so.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Hurry home.
Oh, yeah.
Get your crushes a daisy tomorrow.
Oh, I will be, don't worry.
You guys have a great night. Nice life. All right, uh, reports, the board, standing committees and officers, trustee and liaison reports. If you'll lend-
I have nothing to report at this exact moment.
If you could just stall for one second, I can have Joe Archina's, uh, record report.
Oh, I'll do-
Go right there.
Oh, let me do, let me do Greg Nielsen while you're-
Go for me.
Okay, because Greg's Highway Report, you know, you've gotta love these. Winter Storm Number Eleven on Wednesday, two-twenty, that was called Snow Sleep Freezing Rain Ice. Well, on two-seventeen, it was Snow Sleep Freezing Rain Rain Ice. And the day, and then three days before that, it was just ice, and before that it was two inches sleep freezing rain rain, and the one before that was ice. I mean, this is like a poet-
A winter remix, a romantic winter remix.
This is right, anyway.
Greg Nielsen's haiku.
Right, that's, it's a, yes, I was trying to read it with a poetic sense.
Maybe you can start naming the storms as well. They do, I know they do that on the weather channel now.
That's right, okay. But, yes, so this, it, all those things take a tremendous amount of time, but, um, and then they've also repaired, rebuilt the stone wall, was in danger of collapse on South Broadway at the Field Point parking lot. Assisted the water department with a water, we heard about that on South Buckout, um, and then the potholes that is becoming a, I assume we're gonna do the pothole killer?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's-
We'll have it again soon.
Middle of March-ish, I mean, you know, the schedule may slip, but it's around there. There's some killer potholes.
I've seen killer potholes.
Well, no, those are-
Those are cut ends.
Yeah, and the mayor knows, those have been called in, uh, numerous times. Uh, and, and in any event, it's State Road, unfortunately, so.
Yeah.
We're not gonna be killing potholes on Broadway, but-